And it is August 25th, 2020. This is the Charlton Board of Selectmen meeting and we are doing this remotely. So all votes will be done by roll call vote. Over the agenda, we will be approving minutes from our regular meeting on August 11th, 2020, followed by community relations announcements and open forum. We have under appointments and resignations, a couple of appointments, appointment of the auxiliary police officer, an appointment for Lakes and Ponds Committee. Under scheduled appointments, we have at 6:45 a public hearing, actually no, that 508 International LLC for Live Entertainment request has been withdrawn, so duly noted. At 6:55, we have a public hearing, Chapter 61 removal request, Lot 4, 5 and 6, Butcher Road. At 7:05 PM, planning board appointments, full member and an alternate member. Under new business, we have a site plan modification application, Archangel Realty LLC, Kamasi Masonary Supply. Number two, discussion on Police Reform Act. Number three, South Charlton Reservoir Dam abatement requests. Four, review of town council proposals. Five, special town meeting, we have to set the date and open a special town meeting warrant. And in a discussion about mosquito spraying will be the last item under new business. Currently, we don't have any old business. Board of Committee, Board of Selectmen Committee reports will be a public safety building capital campaign steering committee report. Followed by, we don't have anything listed on the policy review. Andrew, you do have a short, a brief town administrator report tonight?
Yep, just quick stuff.
Okay. And a business unknown, other business unknown at the time posting Charlton Shared Space, Spaces Application Planning Board. Our next meeting will be, or meetings will be, we have a goals and objectives meeting on September 1st, 2020 at 6:00 PM. And then we have a Board of Selectmen, our regular meeting, which will be September 8th, 2020 at 6:30 PM. And then we will adjourn, we do not have any executive session tonight. All right, so moving back up, we'll start with the meeting minutes of August 11th. So we have a motion to approve.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, do we have any discussion? All right, hearing none, all those in favor, David Singer?
Abstain, I was absent.
All right, Bill?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Patsy?
Aye.
And my two will abstain as I wasn't present either, so the motion passes. Thank you very much, everyone. Under the next item, we will read announcements and then I will, we'll have open forum. Squeeze me while I get there.
Karen, I need to start, restart, so you can start reading, I just need to restart my Zoom. I don't know what's going on.
Okay, so, okay, no problem.
Keep on going.
Thank you for letting us know, Patsy. So under announcements for tonight, we have in-person early voting hours left for state primary to be held on September 1st, 2020, 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM at the Heritage School, or Wednesday and Thursday, August 26th and 27th, 7:30 AM to 5:00 PM in the Selectmen's meeting room at the Town Hall. Ballots can be hand delivered to the town clerk's office during normal business hours or can be dropped in the white box outside the door closest to the handicap parking at the Town Hall. If you have any questions, call 508-248-2249. Mass Save provides incentives for incorporating energy efficiency upgrades to the renovations and or additions of existing homes within their service territories. They offer financial incentives for home renovations and additions that exceed the Massachusetts Building Energy Code to improve energy efficiency. For more information, visit masssave.com/removalrenovatead, or you can call with questions 1-866-527-SAVE, extension 7283, or you can email renovate@ma@icf.com. All right, so moving on, we will now have open forum. So if anyone from the public would like to say a few words, what we ask is that you please raise your hand and once we acknowledge you, you can, I think, do they have the ability, Andrew, to unmute themselves, or do we have to do it?
Either, either way.
All right, raise your hand, unmute yourself, we'll recognize you and then state your name and address, and all I ask is if you could keep your comments to, yeah, a few minutes, it would be appreciated. Right, so if there's anyone out there, let us know, I'll wait a few seconds. I'm not seeing anyone, are you?
No. I am not.
All right.
Hey, Andrew, I'm sorry, Karen threw you at me just, but is our chat feature disabled or am I just, don't see it, which is quite.
Uh. When the chat feature is disabled, we, uh, a few change in the settings the other, the other day, just due to some issues that happened with another meeting.
Yeah, yeah, that's not a problem. I only mentioned, you know, to Karen's point of historically, we've got people in the chatroom, so if you have something, just speak up.
Yep, just speak up if you have, if you have anything. Thanks, Bill.
The worst.
All right, so we're gonna now move on to appointments and resignations. We, Andrew, we were talking about the auxiliary police officer, wanna take the, take off?
Attaches a letter from Police Chief Maxfield stating that with the amount of police details required in town, they have determined the need for more auxiliary police officers. They have identified Evan Gaylord as a viable candidate. Mr. Gaylord is a former Charlton Police Explorer, has a bachelor's degree in criminal justice, justice from Westfield State University, and has completed the Reserve Intermittent Police Academy. I would agree with Chief Maxfield and recommend the board make the appointment.
All right, do we have any motion?
So moved.
A second? Any discussion? And Patsy is back, hi, Patsy. All right, hearing none, or by roll call vote, in the order which I see you, Bill?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
And Patsy?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, passes, it's unanimous, thank you, and congratulations. All right. Moving on. All right. The appointment for the Lakes and Ponds Committee?
At the board's August 11th, 2020 meeting, reappointed members to the Lakes and Ponds Committee as recommended by the Pond Associations to the Conservation Commission. On August 17th, 2020, the Prindle Lake Association notified Conservation at their meeting, they voted to rescind the appointment of Richard Landry due to a conflict and are recommending the appointment of Mark Colley. This committee works under the supervision of the Conservation Commission but are appointed by the Board of Selectmen. I'd recommend that the board take the appropriate action and rescind the appointment of Richard Landry and appoint Mark Colley to the Lakes and Ponds Committee as recommended.
I'll open this up to our board for discussion and action.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to rescind Mr. Landry's appointment and at the same time appoint Mr. McColley, at least for discussion.
All right, thank you, Bill, do we have a second?
I second the motion.
Thank you, Patsy, and now we'll open for discussion. Okay, hearing none, well, we'll vote. All those in favor, we'll start with Bill.
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
And Patsy?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye and motion passes, thanks very much. All right, the next item on the agenda.
Yeah, Karen, looks like we're 15 minutes, I had to skip.
Well, isn't that unusual?
Maybe we can, yeah, maybe we can knock out some of the new business stuff, the more innocuous stuff.
Yep, absolutely, so we'll move right down to new business, number one, site plan modification application. Andrew?
Right, second. All right.
It's the first item under new business, sorry, sorry to do that to you.
No problem, just to make sure I have the right memo. Attaches a copy of a requested, request submitted to the planning board by Archangel Realty LLC for site plan modification to construct an additional 3,600 square foot dry storage building. The expansion would allow the tenant, Kamasi Masonary Supply, to convert outdoor storage area into indoors, into indoor storage area. The applicant is also requesting waiver of the requirement of eight additional parking spaces as part of the site plan modification application. The property is located at 23 Trolley Crossing Road. Assessors map 34A Block A Parcel 1.9 in its own residential small enterprise. The board is asked to review and should you wish to provide any comments, they must be received by the planning board no later than September 1st, 2020. So I don't think it requires any, any motion by the board, or any action by the board, but for your information, if you have any comments to provide.
All right, great.
Maybe we, again, just my suggestion, maybe we move down to number three and number five respectively under new business?
Why, you don't want to take number two? You think it'll take too long?
All I know is that, I think it's gonna be much ado about nothing, but I said that once about a poll position, I know, I think they're, like, all hell broke loose, so.
But Bill, but Bill, if we start now, we've got five minutes to discuss that.
Always.
David, what do you think? Can you handle it if we just go with the discussion that you asked about the Police Reform Act, the letter, can you keep it to five minutes so we can be on schedule, or?
Less.
Less.
Give me 30 seconds and you guys can do what you want.
All right, no, no offense, Bill, I appreciate the thought, but we are gonna continue with discussion on Police Reform Act and Mr. Singer, or Selectman Singer?
I will go very quickly.
Is on a timer. The timer is starting.
Okay, so you all may be aware of the Police Reform Bill, it's a very bad bill, even if it was just affecting the police, but it goes beyond the police, it actually affects all elected and appointed officials as well. So, planning board, select board, Board of Health, even been common, even Historical Commission, everyone will be affected. But as I said, even if it didn't go beyond the police alone, it's a bad bill. The MMA has gone and supported this without asking any municipalities if we support this, and many municipalities have already come out publicly and sent letters to the MMA saying, you were never authorized to take this position, you are not speaking on our behalf, nor did you ask us. And so I am asking this board, if the town of Charlton would join Lester and other communities in sending the MMA a letter admonishing them for taking a position on behalf of all of the towns of Mass without ever even asking us if we support this or not. And most towns, people I spoke to, do not support the bill, do not support it as written, and feel it was wrong of the MMA to just arbitrarily make a, take a position and support something without ever, on our behalf, without even talking to the towns. So I'm asking this to send a letter as likewise included in the packet.
Would you like to turn that into a motion, Selectman Singer?
So moved.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, and thank you, that was very, very good.
Yeah, yeah, that was very concise for you.
I went fast.
Yeah, no, I'm impressed with it.
Karen, do you have gold stars that you can do, put like the gold star on, that was pretty good.
We'll have to talk about that, our goals and objectives meeting for new policies and prestigious passing.
That's perfect.
Any, any discussion on, on, on the motion, on what we have before us?
I mean. We're just gonna pretty much use the one, the boilerplate from the one that's in the packet.
I'll, I'll try to use that as a draft, with, try to add some local nuance, and I'll submit it to everybody for their approval.
Okay, awesome.
Bill, did you have something to say?
No, I was gonna say, I mean, just to, just to echo what Selectman Singer said, I mean, I think at the end of the day, like, to me, 80% of the bill is probably pretty positive, there's 20% that I completely disagree with, and if the MMA is gonna take a stance, they should be polling, or at least reaching out to individual members in individual communities and to make a blanket statement like that regardless of the issue I have seen an issue with, so yeah, no, I am fully in favor of basically using the written letter and just kinda, you know, tweaking it.
All right, so we have a motion and a second, any other discussion? All right, hearing none, we'll do, again, take a roll call vote, I'll start with David.
Aye, it is only 6:45 PM.
I know, this is good. Patsy?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
And I vote aye, passes unanimously, that, thank you, David, for bringing that up, and thank you, Andrew, for.
About a poll position, about a poll hearing, I still don't understand.
All right, we're actually still very early, so we will continue on, I'm feeling good about this. The next item, South Charlton Reservoir Dam, the abatement request, Andrew?
The repairs and betterment of, for the South Charlton Reservoir Dam were approved by town meeting vote on October 20th, 2015. This project was petitioned to the town by the South Charlton Reservoir Association, the Conservation Commission. Town meeting vote authorized the full amount of the project to be assessed proportionately to those with water frontage and those with offshore access. The total cost of the dam repair project, $725,000. The total cost was authorized to split between 1061 properties with water frontage and 34 properties with offshore access. Property owners charged for the betterment may pay the full amount, bettered over, within 30 days, with no interest or paid over the term of 20 years at 3.125% interest. These residents have the right to request an abatement for betterments for consideration. The following have requested abates. Alan S. Chin, Lynn's E. Chin, of 315 Partridge Hill Road. The Board of Assessors have recommended denying this request. The parcel is assessed for one offshore betterment. Mr. Chin attended their meeting on October, on August 17th, 2020, and was in agreement. Michael and Pamela Palermo of 48 South Charlton, South Charlton Shore Road, the Board of Assessors have recommended granting for the request. Shannon Ship, I'll say Shannon S. and Greg S. of 25 Robert Boulevard, the Board of Assessors have recommended denying this request. And Lori Jacobson Garrity of 73 South Charlton Shore Road, the Board of Assessors have recommended denying this request.
Karen threw you?
Yep.
Andrew, do we have any other documentation than what's in our packet, meaning additional emails, contacts, et cetera?
I believe that this is all of the documentation that we have on record. I don't believe there's any other information unless we were to call the assessors' minutes from the meeting that they made the recommendation.
Any other members, any action?
Madam Chair?
Yep.
I would, I would move to follow the assessor's recommendation.
I would second that move.
All right, we have a motion and a second to follow the recommendation of the assessors. Do we have any further discussion?
I think there was more information last time, that's why we kind of expect more, we got a lot of, I think we got a lot of more correspondence, but the, from what is here, I, I agree.
All right, and hearing none, we'll do this, once again, what we, by roll call, Bill?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Patsy?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, passes unanimously, thank you very much. And we're still early, all right.
I think we're down on page 100 something at this point, yeah, Karen, we're down on page six of the packet, if that helps.
Which, what page number was that, Bill?
106.
Oh, wow. So we're moving down to the review of town council proposals, which this two shouldn't take long, because this will be just a quick discussion, right, Andrew, about what was, has been submitted to us?
Yeah, you know what, Karen, I'm sorry, I messed you up, page 106 is actually the special town meeting, that's, that's my fault.
That's all right, Bill, there's no memo on this one, so.
Oh, cool, all right, I feel better.
Me too.
Just basically, you know, I, you guys do have the proposals that came in, we did solicit through all qualified bidders, through comp buys. It was a total, period, 340 something, people that were on that qualified list, we only received two applications. I sent to you guys some proposed questions to consider in the interview stage, so, you know, just wanted to throw it to the board to see how you wanna proceed, if you wanna set a date for interviews, or, you know, how, how you guys wanna handle moving forward.
Madam Chair, can I ask a, like, a question that's gonna sound flip, but I, but I actually mean it seriously? Knowing, so, long story short, do we need interviews? Meaning, we, I look through the packet and I'm, and I'm comfortable as is, I don't know if an interview is going to change my mind, and it may, but I very well may be in the minority, because I really, looking, I myself, looking to replace Cars, Goben, and Black. If, if others wanna go in that direction, that's fine, but it's a, but it's, it's a serious question to the board, basically, how do we wanna handle that step?
Good question, yep, David?
If I can, in response to Bill, so, I guess I'm thinking along the same lines, and my reasoning is this, we sent out a RFP to 340 law firms, only two reply, and one of them is the incumbent Cosgrove and Black. Having gone over everything, I, I think I would be more in favor of going ahead with interviews if we had like a dozen or even a half a dozen competitive RFPs to go over, but from what I see, there's only two in the, in the, the new one, I won't give the name of the firm, compared to our incumbent, doesn't check any of the boxes, they don't have the history of the town, they don't have the institutional knowledge of the town, they don't know all the players in the town, and they're also significantly more expensive. I, I see no cause to, personally, to, to, to move forward, I think that at this point, we, we seen what we needed to see. I might have a different approach, a feeling, I think we had, like I said, if we had six or 12 RFPs that came in that were competitive, but having only received one, who doesn't have the knowledge, experience, background of the town, and there's so much more money to boot, I kind of agree with, with Sutcliffe, I guess. And I'm gonna crate the dogs, because they're going crazy right now.
Patsy, Steve?
I respectfully disagree. I think that the, the hourly difference isn't that big, I, I have, I have a concern about the, the quality and the, the, the long-term service, I, sometimes you just need a change, just because somebody, you've been using somebody for so long, doesn't mean you should stay. If you look at the proposals, um, one is, one had, one looks like it had, a lot of effort was put in, the other one, it, it just, it seems like it was kind of thrown together, I, so.
So, so what I'm hearing?
I don't know if interviews, I don't know if interviews are really necessary, we, we actually do have experience using, the town has experience using both firms that submitted, so I'm, I'm, again, not so sure we need to have interviews, but I, I, whatever, I'll agree with everybody else, I don't, I don't care either way.
And by the way, let me say, both firms that applied, again, I, I don't wanna give away the other name unless they want us to, are excellent. If I were looking for a move personally, or if there was a compelling case, I would have no issue whatsoever, under, under our existing circumstances. I have yet to hear of a compelling reason to move, so again, we can talk about it more at a different meeting, but tonight, after the 6:55, we, or Steve and Karen, basically, whatever people wanna do, I'm fine with, but, but I do sense this, I don't necessarily think we need interviews.
I have it on, so, sorry to the chair, can I ask a quick question? So I have a couple of examples of, of why, um, of why a change may be necessary, however, some of them involve executive session stuff, some of those examples involve.
So what I'm, yeah, that's.
So I, I don't know if, if, if this conversation can go into executive session, I just don't wanna cause any problems by bringing up those points.
All right, so, wait, hold on, please, one minute, Mr. Singer, before you speak, Steve, did you have anything you wanna say, and then I'm just gonna make a recommendation?
I, no, I don't, I, I think, I'm, I'm waiting to hear whether or not some of these discussions need to go to executive.
So, it, it, thank you, Steve, so it's, it is quite apparent from the, the comments just made that we need to, we need to move forward and not necessarily have interviews, but review the information and meet separately, you know, tonight wasn't about voting, as you know, and the agenda is clear that we're just discussing, you know, what's been submitted, so I would like to recommend that we, you know, move forward. Andrew, if you could tell us legally what we're required to do, are we, I'm assuming we're not required to do interviews, but.
No, there's no, there's no requirement, because this process doesn't fall under a chapter 30B process, so really, I think it's something that we could discuss further in executive session, because it does involve, I wanna say potential litigation, but specifically, you know, with legal matters.
Let's just check on that, though, because we're still talking on professional competency, so there's that weird gray line.
Right, yeah, so.
Not to mention, we couldn't do it tonight, because we're not posted for it.
Exactly.
Right, and we, again, we're, we're disgusting, and that's all we're gonna do tonight, but, so, that's what we're gonna do. So we do, this needs more discussion, because we're not all in agreement, it's quite apparent, and so we'll get more information, Andrew will check on a few things for us and get back to us, and then we'll reschedule this to make a decision at another meeting. Sound good?
Yeah, Karen, if we can do, I mean, just because it's legal stuff, if we can do at our next real meeting, that would be great.
I'm fine, can we, I, I'm fine with that, Andrew, is that, you know, sound?
Yep. Yeah, it is acceptable.
Yep, that sounds good. All right, I think, hey, now, we can move back to our 6:55 public hearing, yes? I gotta find it. Andrew, do you send that up?
Just one second, get back to that.
I think it's on page, yeah.
I'm on hard copy, so I'm all over the place at this point. There you go, 6:55 public hearing, Chapter 61 removal request for lots 4, 5 and 6, Boucher Road. Attaches a request from Roy C. Gunter III, managing member for Gunter LLC, to remove and sell lots 4, 5 and 6 off Perrier Road in Boucher Drive, to convert the usage to residential use. This is Assessors Map 40B-8.14, 40B-8.31, and 40B-8.15, to Anais Unis D'Assario. The Planning Board, Board of Assessors, Conservation Commission, and Water Sewer Commission have all reviewed the requests and have no objection to the town of Charlton choosing not to exercise their right of first refusal for this request. The chairman should open the public hearing by reading the attached public hearing notes. I'd recommend the board include the request.
All right, and that's what I shall do. So, public hearing notice, please be advised that the Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, August 25th, 2020, at 6:55 PM, at their meeting to be held via Zoom, phone access is 1646-558-8656, to act on a request by Gunter LLC, Roy C. Gunter III, managing member who intends to sell parcels 4, 5, and 6 off of Perrier Road in Boucher Drive in Charlton, Mass, as described on the plan of land recorded on January 31st, 2019, in the Worcester District Registry of Deeds at Plan Book 944, Plan 17, as identified on Assessors Map 40. Anyone interested should appear at that date and time specified or submit concerns in writing. All right, so we officially opened the meeting, do we need the motion? Or is that?
No, I think, no, I think that it's open, I think.
And we just need them to, to close it, all right, so, is there anyone here to speak regarding this?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Singer?
Obviously, you know, my position is out of the boards, I, and when we vote, I'll vote. I, I just, this street, I'm not sure if everyone's aware, but should be aware, this street is probably one of the streets in town that I have personally heard over the years, the most complaints about development on, and issues regarding wetlands and rule breaking from developers and builders and construction. And I just ask that, you know, we and, and other boards in town, planning, CONCOM, keep in mind, this particular street has a very bad history in Charlton, as far as development goes.
All right, thank you, David. Any other comments from the board?
Madam Chair, unless there are people in the audience who wanna speak, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Okay, one more check, anyone out there want to speak now?
I second the motion.
All right. Hearing none, so we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll do the roll, roll call vote, Bill?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Patsy?
Aye.
And I vote aye, passes unanimously, thank you, everyone.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to not exercise our right of first refusal for this.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, Bill?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
David? David?
Aye.
Patsy?
Aye.
Vote aye, passes unanimously, thank you, do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
Oh, that was my first motion, Karen, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we, we closed it and we voted.
Gotcha.
Yeah, these can be funny, no worries. So, we're on page 52, if that helps at all, Madam Chair.
Yes, it, it does, actually. So, planning, planning board appointments, so we, we're still too early for that, right, we have five minutes? So planning, planning board appointments. So we, we're still too early for that. Right, we have five minutes?
Yeah, five minutes.
I'm not going to apologize for moving us along too quickly tonight.
No, don't, don't.
You think we can do the special town meeting? I mean, if, if we're just setting the date and opening the warrant, that should be a big deal.
Yeah.
All right, let's do that. So we're moving on down. So if everyone's can pay attention here. We're on to new business, number five, special town meeting, we're setting the date, opening the special town meeting warrant. Andrew?
Right. Attaches a proposed calendar for special town meeting to be held on Tuesday, October 13th, 2020. With the board opening the warrant tonight, we have confirmed the date available with Charlton Middle School as well as town clerk and moderator. We have secured the auditorium cafeteria and parking lot as it's not clear yet what, what space would be the safest for town meeting due to COVID. I would ask the board to include the calendar as a submitted and open the warrant for the special town meeting.
Madam Chair, still moved if we need it?
Yeah. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion?
No, only that I checked those dates and there aren't any strange holidays that will come back in.
Why'd you do that, Bill? I don't, I don't understand.
Are you sure? There's no, no win in a Massachusetts holiday that's.
No, there is the holiday on Monday, but the Tuesday, fine.
That's why we're on Tuesday.
Thank you. So, all right, so let's vote. Patsy?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Vote aye, passes as unanimous. Thank you for, for that, Andrew.
Oh, by the way, I shouldn't have said weird holiday. I should have just said holiday. I meant like any, like absurd, like, like any holiday that we could have, like, you know.
You've insulted me.
Well, no, we dropped the ball last time and I, and I still feel horrible though.
It's 7:04. We only have a minute here. Talk some more, Bill.
What else is going on?
Well, what does Bill consider weird holidays? Is that like Veterans Day or?
No, no.
Bunker Hill Day?
I would say.
Evacuation, evacuation day.
Well, yeah, that's.
Yeah, that's a, that's a good one. Yeah.
I love that holiday that recognizes me for, for anything positive would automatically be considered weird because that would just.
Karowski Day.
Trust me, people actually have to go to work on that day. Like you want rewarded, you're actually penalized.
Especially at a weekend.
So let's move on up now to 7:05. So we have under, now if you're following along, the scheduled appointments, we are on the last item at, and at 7:05 and 7:05. Planning board appointments, full member and alternate member, the planning board has posted for this evening. Thank you. I'm assuming you're all here or the majority of you here, and we can do this jointly, yes? Do you want to open your meeting or?
Yes, I'd like to. Thank you, Madam Chair. Being 7:05 on August 25th, I'd like to do a roll call to open the planning board meeting. Dawn?
Here, aye.
Jean?
Here.
And Johnny, there? John Smith, all right, Ross Smith, the aye. So we have a quorum.
Okay, awesome.
So we are here before you tonight to, because we had one vacancy that was left by Patsy Ridlack and then one alternate seat that was left open. And we had three candidates for these two seats. We did the interviews at our last scheduled meeting. And we had two out of the three showed up for the interview and one which was Bill Fontaine, who's interested in filling the remainder of a one-year permanency. And then Alicia Jick, who's interested in filling the alternate seat. So they were both approved by the planning board by majority vote. And so we're here before you tonight to have it presented to you and for you guys to vote on.
Right now, Andrew, do we do this jointly though, still, right? Am I correct? I want to make sure we do the right process.
Right, correctly. As a elected board, it requires a joint vote of both boards.
All right, so having, so having said that, do we have a motion and a second, please?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I always forget if we need a vote, but I'm absolutely fine endorsing the recommendation of, of the planning board on this one.
You have a second?
Second.
All right, so Bill and Patsy, thank you. Any discussion?
I just want to thank all three applicants.
One question, not that it probably really has any bearing. What, you said there were three people who applied and one wasn't able to make it. Was that given to attend that meeting?
Uh, yeah, we, we, he was notified that, of the Zoom meeting. And it was unfortunate that he, that candidate who put his name forward wasn't able to, to show up to, and it's because everyone was asked the same identical questions. Each candidate was, so. He did provide a statement for his interest, which is great. It's always great that people want to step forward and volunteer because that's what I consider anything that, anyone on these elected boards, we, we're volunteers. So.
Okay, and just everybody received the same notification of the Zoom meeting at the same time. That's all that was.
Yes.
Great, all right, I'm good.
Any other comments, discussion?
Can we just restate the motion, please?
So Madam Chair, the motion is going to be to appoint sorry, Bill Fontaine. Yeah, to Bill Fontaine to the, to the remaining term, Patty's old seat. And Alicia to the, to the alternate position.
Thank you.
All right, so.
Nice second pass.
Yep. If there isn't, I'm not hearing any further discussion from any, anyone, planning board or select board? All right, so we'll do roll call vote. Bill?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Patsy?
Aye.
All right, and everyone on the planning board who's here?
We'll do a roll call vote. Dawn?
Aye.
Jean?
Jean?
She's on mute.
Put me on muter. I'm trying to.
There I am.
All right, Ross, aye.
All right, so.
John on the phone? I thought it was his number, okay.
All right, so the motion passes. It's unanimous. Thank you and congratulations to everyone.
All right, all right, thank you for your time. I also, I'd just like to close our, our planning board meeting here for August 25th, do a roll call to close the meeting. Dawn?
Ross, you, you should have to stay with us.
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
All right, Ross, aye.
All right, thank you very much.
All right.
Have a good night.
You guys want me to stick around for a couple more minutes?
Run while you can. I might join the planning board so I can leave.
All right.
I want to stick her out for the, for the shared spaces application discussion. I know.
What time's that on, Andrew?
It's, we can handle it right now.
All right, awesome.
So I know it was later on in the agenda, but Randy, if you're on, if you want to give the overview on that.
And just, just for clarification purposes, we're under other business unknown at time posting the Charlton Shared Spaces application? Thanks, just wanted to clarify that. See, I don't know what the, everyone's following where we're going, so. Go ahead, Randy. Randy?
Sorry, I had to unmute. Ian from CMRPC was also going to join us tonight to do this, but I don't know if he had a chance because he was on a meeting with another town. This is a grant from Mass DOT, which is state aid reimbursable program, and it is Town Charlton Shared Streets and Spaces Application Narrative that he, CMRPC has provided to us. This program is basically to provide temporary improvements for the town, given the COVID.
Hi, Randy.
Yes.
Sorry.
Randy, Ian's on.
Ian from CMRC BC, he has been working, CMRPC has actually been preparing this grant application for us and Ian and I have been involved. Ian's done most of the work. I'll give him the credit for that. He can probably give a better overview than I can.
All right.
Yes. All right, so thank you all for having me on today. Sorry that I was a little late. I was double booked on calls this evening, but the Shared Streets and Spaces Grant Program is around to allow towns to implement temporary measures that would facilitate, which would improve pedestrian and cyclist infrastructure in town as well as provide businesses, schools, anything, the extra space in order to allow for socially distancing operations in, to happen. So what, and the purpose of it being temporary is so not only can it be installed quicker and then monitored, but then you can use data from the, from the temporary measures to see if these are permanent solutions that could be put into place. So the application is open through the middle of September and we are, so we're hoping to get this in sooner rather, as, you know, soon as possible. So we can get, if awarded, get this implemented by October. So what we are proposing to do and what, you know, we, we worked with Randy to sort of develop is along the stretch of Main Street between let me pull up the map. Sorry, one second. So between Masonic Home Road and Burlingame Road along North Main Street, what we are looking to do is where there are, you know, existing or faded crosswalks that, you know, there's about one, two, three, five of them, we would be repainting them with temporary paint to, you know, to provide the brightness so that oncoming vehicles can see them as well as put into place along most of them, some of the temporary, you know, stop state law yield to pedestrian signage. The one that would have increased improvements would be the crosswalk that goes along North Main Street between the town hall and the library. We would be proposing to put in some temporary flashing, pedestrian flashing beacons that can be quickly installed for, temporarily put it there as well as, you know, the proper signage so that oncoming vehicles can really see this one important crosswalk because it connects, you know, not only the town hall, but the senior center to the library, which has a lot of services and especially nowadays where along another little town common area, we've got the big tent and there's the lunches for the seniors. Think to have very increased safety there is very important. Now, you know, now more than ever. Some additional improvements would be the temporary painting of some sharrows, so bike sharrows along that stretch of road as well to, along, as well as some signage to alert vehicles that, you know, there's going to be increased increased bicycle activity here, especially, you know, with the elementary school. And I'm not sure what your opening plan is for the schools, whether or not you're doing in-person, hybrid or all virtual, but just the one day that we went out there to do a site visit of the, of the project area, we saw several kids you know, biking along this stretch and to go back to the playing, to the ball fields behind the library. So I think to make sure that vehicles know that there are going to be not only, you know, just regular bikes, but also particularly you know, kids on bikes there.
Hopefully it'll come back, but.
Hey Randy, can you mute yourself?
I, I muted him.
Look at you, son of a.
Well, it's not working.
So did, did Randy want to say something?
Aye.
That, that may have been an accident, Liam.
Yeah, continue, sorry about that.
No, that's all right. So they provide some of those improvements. And then the last thing that we are proposing to do is to place behind the library, sort of a temporary blocking off of several of the parking spots or parking spaces because, and then putting in there a temporary tent and tables that would provide for kids to be able to do some of the schoolwork together, but in a socially distanced and safe outdoor environment. And we would, you know, provide some charging ports if they need, if they had laptops that they could come in and, you know, plug in their laptops and get some schoolwork done together, but it, but outdoors in case they're not able to, you know, stay indoors, they need access to the library to get books or something of that nature. They can, they can be there and do work social distance. So that is sort of an overview of what we are proposing to, what the project that we put together is proposing to do. And now I think it's just up to, you know, questions and comments that the board might have input that you might want to provide so that we can update it as necessary and maybe get it to a good place to submit fairly soon. So that is sort of my very quick overview of what we're, what we're looking to do, what we want to do along that stretch of road. And I now welcome any, all questions and comments.
Yeah, and before, so before we open it up for, for the board members, I had just a quick question. You had mentioned we could submit something after this meeting. What's the deadline?
Deadline is it's mid-September. I forget the exact date.
I'm just trying to figure out, when would we have to get something to you, just to make your life easier? The sooner the better, I'm hearing, right?
The sooner the better. Let's see, looking at their website right now.
But while you do, while you do that, if anyone has, Bill, you wanted to make a comment, I think?
Yeah, just two very quick things. Ian, this is all going to be grant money for us, right? Assuming that it's approved, meaning the town would have to pay for any of it?
Correct, it is entirely. It's all, it's all grant money. There's no match involved. And I have the date, so the it's a, they will continue to accept applications until Friday, September 27th, so the end of September.
Second question, very briefly, is assuming there's no way to request additional money to repair the sidewalks in that area as well? That as, as just whatever one who's walked them realizes, those are a major disrepair. So I was just curious whether that's an option or should we just not hold our breath?
So repair of sidewalks, that's not something that is allowable under this grant program. But what I, what I will say is that is something that you could consider under your complete streets program. So I know that you have a prioritization plan in place. That's something that this program is really good at is sort of you, looking at some, as well as, you know, the safety aspect and the court and the social distancing aspect of it, but also maybe taking a look at trialing some improvements of complete streets so that you can, might fully, fully apply for funds to do that. But that's not something at the, at this time that you could do. And after having walked the walked the little stretch of road, I don't think that widening the sidewalks using, you know, cones and things of that nature is really viable at this time, just because the road isn't wide enough to really merit that. That is something that we looked at.
Any other board members, questions?
And you said the implementation would be end of October?
The yes, implementation has to be fairly quick and it has to be yeah, I think it has to be implemented by October 30th. So that's why we're looking at temporary materials.
Yeah, I think it was 30 days after award, the grant funds had to be in place.
Correct.
So Ian, do you need any motion or anything like that from us? Or, or is this more just give it, give you feedback and then you and Randy will just take it from there?
Yeah, so we don't need any formal feedback on the application. We don't need, you know, to submit a signed, you know, a signed letter from the board stating that you approved it. I think this is just more to get comment and feedback from, from you as well as if, you know, if it's internal process to approve any sort of grant applications. I don't, I don't know what the process is with the town, but.
No, cool. Karen, I'm good. Thank you for that, Ian. Nice job, Randy.
Thank you for the presentation. Any other comments? All right, hearing none. I will move on. Thank you again. It's appreciated.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Ian. Thanks, Randy.
Thank you.
All right, where are we? Are we now on the mosquito spraying program discussion, right? On to new business number six?
Yep.
Get back there. So I'd asked for this to be put on the agenda per a resident's request. And I, I am going to ask Kristen, if you, I thought I saw you, yes, there you are. You are welcome to speak at this point. Cause I know you've been really spearheading this initiative. So if you want to just give us an overview, please?
Sure. Hi, can you guys hear me okay?
Yeah, Kristen, you're good.
Okay, I just want to make sure. So there's a program called the Central Massachusetts Mosquito Control Program. And it's much more than bug spray. They actually offer eight different services. A couple of them really surprised me. A couple of them really surprised me. They have surveillance. They come in, they survey area for where larvae would develop so that they can kill mosquitoes before they hatch. They have public education. They have outreach to senior centers. They have outreach to schools, like a massive public education component regarding West Nile, what you can do on your own. Then the third service is ditch maintenance. They actually go around and identify places where water does not flow free, freely, where it's boggy, where it would be a perfect hatchery. And using hand tools, they make the water flow freely. They improve ditches. And then that's all part of larva control and source reduction is another service they offer. And then since 2014, they actually do beaver mitigation, which I know in the past, we've had major issues with beavers flooding certain sections of town. So that's also a place where mosquitoes would breed. And as a result, beaver mitigation is now one of their services that they offer. And then the part that everybody already knows about is the adult control, which is the spraying. In this case, it's a truck mounted sprayer and it uses the same active ingredient that can be found in the bug pesticide that is on dog collars, flea and tick collars. Except it's in a lower concentration, apparently. And then the eighth component is research and efficacy. They go back and see, you know, well, they've done and whatnot. I looked at some of their citizen surveys. They have overwhelmingly wonderful results. People are very happy. They get serviced within one to three days when they call for, to have their own property sprayed. And so those are the basic gist of the services. They have this proactive section where they go out and they look for places where that would be a breeding habitat. Particularly, there's a whole section of this PowerPoint they sent me on places that they called, they refer to them as tire dumps, like had pictures of places in the woods where there's just piles of tires. And if you've hiked at all in Charlton, we have those too. They go in, they take all the tires out, they recycle them all. So they get rid of these tire dumps where water basically fills the container of, you know, the tire and they breed in the tires. So they get rid of all that stuff, which I basically would call that a recycling effort. And the public education component, I think, is really awesome too concerning the situation with public health viruses like West Nile and Triple E, just making everybody more aware of, you know, what they can do. Right next door in Sturbridge and 22 other towns in Central Mass, they already participate. The only way to participate is you have to have a vote of a regular or a special town meeting. And then the money, they assess a fee per town and the way that they come up with the fee is based on the size of the town and also the sum of the equalized valuations of properties. And that whole formula is administered by the Department of Revenue. And then the way that it's paid is it's not a reason appropriate at town meeting. It's removed from your local aid. So you pay directly out of your local aid. He gave me an estimate for Charlton of 112,000 per year, the, the director of Central Mass mosquito control project. He sent me that via email today and I'd be happy to forward it to whomever is interested. But my main concern was that, you know, would there be any areas in town that would be not eligible for the services? Like if we were going to join this, we'd want to make sure that every place could have equal access to services. And he assured me that school fields, outdoor areas, playgrounds, private property is by request using their website. Town property would be allowed to as long as we don't have a bylaw preventing it, which I don't, I didn't see it. I looked, but I, maybe, I'll look again. And then also I even asked about Buffenville, which is run by the U.S. Corps of Engineers. And he said that they could work with them and get approval from the, the park leadership. And that's usually a problem. So it looks like most of our areas would, would be allowed. I reached out to the school committee. They responded that if the town were to join, that certainly they would be interested in taking advantage. But this would really be up to the people. I mean, you'd have to ask the people if they would like to do this. And then if they say yes, you can. And if they say no, you can't. And that's the only way to join. There's no other way. So I hope that's a good enough little overview. They have a lot of PowerPoints that they sent me and email that are, they have incredible pictures of all the work. So you can see before and after. If anybody is interested, I'm happy to forward it along to Andrew or Karen or whomever to get to the people who are interested. But I guess my main point was just to bring up a program for people to consider. That's all I've got. Thanks.
Thank you. You always do your research. That's for sure, Kristin. We appreciate it. Comments, comments or questions from the board?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I just wanted to remind those, those viewing this and, you know, Steve and Patsy, this was, this was prior to you, that the last iteration of the board, I brought this up and Kristin, you're right on with that, like 112, because at the time, the, I think quoted me like back in napkin math, like 110 to 120. So that's definitely goes in. At, at the time, the Board of Health, the Jim Philbrook and I believe the majority of the board at, the former board was not interested in moving forward. So new board, new reality, it could be different, but I generally, this is just me, like, I didn't bring this up. I didn't push Kristin to do it, so everyone knows.
I vouched for that. He didn't. But the other thing I want to say is it, it's not up to the Board of Health or the Board of Selectmen. You absolutely would need the vote of the people to join this program. You can't just the Board of Selectmen. That's the law.
Yeah, so you would need, or we would need a town meeting vote to go forward. And as Kristin mentioned, it's taken directly out of Chapter 70 funds. So for all intents and purposes, not us, so for all intents or state aid, so for all intents and purposes, it is probably too late for this season. So it would have to be next season. So, I mean, I'm assuming Kristin, that you'd be looking potentially for, to take, if we were to take action for either the October town meeting or potentially in the spring.
Yeah, so I think spring is probably a good idea. And it's literally just a question to the town. Would you want to participate in this program or not? And if people say no, then it's no. And if they say yes, then, then it can go forward. That's exactly what it is. I would think May, probably.
Is, is the May town meeting too late?
That's a good question, Steve, because the more I think about it, you know, you have a thaw and then you have all those places where water collects.
Kristin, when I asked last year, he said that wasn't a problem.
He did. Okay. So I didn't ask that question. That's a very good question.
And then I guess my other question is far as the, they know how much standing water there is in Charlton or, or do they just do?
When he gave me the price, I thought, Jesus, you know how many tires we have?
Standing water. Trust me, I've been ATVing around here. This.
Yeah.
We're town full of standing water. And then the beef stands, that's an interesting one. I didn't think part of it. But that's, that's a, that's a con con major issue too, right?
Can I, I'm sorry, to the chair, can I ask a question about the finance piece? So it's, so it's about 112 a year. Is there a commitment for a certain amount of time or is this voted on every year? Or how does, how does that work?
That's a good question. I'd have to go back and ask. I don't know that answer.
So do you want to take that? So Karen threw you Patsy, when I talked to him last year, from, again, long story short, and I, I wanted, I, I'm sure he won't admit to this. I think you have to supposedly sign up for like two or three years, but I think it's one of those, you don't really, if that makes sense, meaning that if you want to get out of it, you can get out of it. But I think that may actually take a town meeting vote as well. So if, so my assumption is that if you did it for a year and then town meeting says, look, or I don't want to do this anymore. I'm hard pressed to believe that they're going to enforce any, any requirement.
Any other comments, questions?
I didn't read in any of the documentation or in any of the emails I had with the director today, any requirement for multi-year commitment. He didn't specifically say that, but I can outright ask and get an answer back via email. All right.
I will say again, and Steve and Pat, this is probably more directed to you guys, and I mean that nicely, that there is a because I, I'm in favor of this. I mean, every, I mean, everyone knows that. There is a tremendous opposition to this as well. There are people who are vehemently opposed for very, what, you know, I vowed reasons. I mean, on some, I think others become a bit conspiratorial. But there is a very large movement of people who are opposed to this. And I would be remiss if I didn't acknowledge that this is a binary issue of people like, yeah, we should absolutely do this. There's a ton of people who come out, no, this, these, it has, it could damage insects like honeybees, things like that. So this is definitely not open shut. Let's put it that way.
Yeah.
Agreed.
Madam Chair?
Yeah, David?
So I'll, I'll respond to Bill and this is not to say for or against the program. But this is what we also learned last time and the reason is the previous iteration of the BOS and the Board of Health were all opposed to it. So Kristin's provided a lot of very good information. What people have to be aware of is that yes, everyone is, is empowered to participate. However, you can say no. And part of the problem is while it comes out of the, the monies before you get it, that still means you're getting a hundred thousand dollars plus less money, which means there's something you can't pay for. So in the end, given the current situation, you're going to have to decide as boards, what do you want to cut? Money from the library, the teacher, police officer, because it's going to come from somewhere, because the town's getting that much less money. That's just one facet. Remember, I'm not saying the pros and cons of the program, but just things people have to know. The other part is because people don't have to be sprayed and we've ran into this problem in the past, the schools all said no. The private fields all said no. And the minute all the fields where the kids congregate most are all saying no, you literally rendered the entire program ineffective. Because when you can only spray certain areas, well, mosquitoes then just breathe here and here instead of here. And then they just move right in again anyway. So in order for it to be effective and to, and to make that investment with taxpayer money, you really need to be sure to have 100% buy-in. The schools have to say yes. The town fields have to say yes. The privately owned fields all have to say yes, but the program doesn't work. So you need buy-in from everybody. It's also neighborhood to neighborhood can opt out. So one street can completely opt out and another one can say yes. That's also problematic.
Any other comments?
So all of our sports fields and our school committees and our, they're all, they all live in town. So if, if it did go to a vote and that's how they felt, then they would vote it down. I've always been adamantly about, about putting things, if, if, unless it's, it doesn't make any sense, but, but putting things in front of our residents is always a good thing. Cause you, you, I read the post on the social media post about this. And, you know, whenever you see one, there's like 50 or 50 posts. People start, you know, saying things, a lot of things aren't true. Some of them are, they're all over the place. I have, I have no issue putting it in front of the voters. It's not, it's, we're not sitting here saying we're going to spend a hundred and 12,000. What we're saying is let the, let our, the majority of our residents decide how we're going to, if, if this is something that will help them. So that's, that's just how I feel. I think that if we can get it in front of our town to vote, then that's, it, it sort of lets the majority decide.
I have one other thing to add. I did email the school committee and I did get a positive response. I'll forward that to Karen and Andrew so that they have it. They said they had not been asked in the past, but maybe it was a different iteration of their board also. That's all. Thanks.
And this is also something, you know, obviously we'd want to hear from the Board of Health regarding as well. So if we move forward or when we move forward, we're going to be talking about this in the future, obviously. And we will have to give a good amount of time so we can get the information out there to folks. But I think, am I saying, is it safe to say everyone who needed to make comments that we're all set?
One more question, Kristin. Do you know if Dudley is, is a participant or?
You know what? There's a map. They gave me color coded by who participates and I don't recall what Dudley's status was. And I don't want to waste your time trying to find that slide right now, but I could email it to you, Steve, if you'd like. Cause that would preclude, yeah, if they don't participate, then obviously Shepherd Hill wouldn't get sprayed. But you would cover heritage, South and Middle, the elementary school. It's a lot of fields.
When we do revisit this, I would like to know if the state, if we're considered like a high risk for a Triple E or whatever, a mosquito borne illness, does the state step in and do it for free? I don't have the answer to that, but do you, Kristin?
So I asked him specifically, like how, you know, people are going to ask how this is different than that emergency spraying that occurred last fall. That was aerial, that was by plane. And it did not cover where I live at all. So that I live on the Oxford end of Charlton and they completely didn't spray us at all. So he said that that's a completely different thing. That's an emergency order and that's completely based on virus numbers, like West Nile and Triple E is what I believe is what they were looking at last fall. But, um, he said that's completely not under his purview. That's not this program. That's the state by emergency order. And that's by aerial plane. That's a whole different thing. And I'm not even sure if it's even the same chemicals. I have no idea. Yeah.
Good to know.
Yeah.
Excuse me. Yes, David?
Yeah, yeah, just to Kristin's point and I agree with Bill. I think it's a different chemical, but yeah, it's by orders. So just like last year when the state deemed Triple E had reached a certain threat level, they took it upon themselves and they sprayed you whether you wanted it or not. And at that point, everything gets sprayed. And I, I, I welcome Kristin's feedback from the schools because in the past, maybe it was different, I guarantee you different superintendents. But they didn't want it in the past. And keep in mind, you, you need, I think, really not only the schools, but the private fields, the little leagues, the soccer fields, all you need to sign in. And you need to have 100% of the neighborhoods sign in because the minute, you know, 20 neighborhoods say no, that, that's, and that's the problem is you have to have 100% buy-in.
Right. Madam Chair, I, we just, I, I was able to find the map, but it looks like Sturbridge is the only abutting town that has opted in. Webster and Auburn are the closest two towns that are opted into the program. And then from Auburn West is basically contention or a continuous participation in the program.
You don't happen to know how long like Sturbridge has been doing it, do you?
I don't. I believe that I can probably get that information.
Yeah, that'd be good to have, again, in, in the future.
I have relatives there. It's been, it's at least a few years. I have relatives there that, that participate.
Madam Chair?
David?
Sure you, sure you. Andrew, could you also find out, so if like Spencer, Lester, Oxford, if they're not participating, can you just reach out to them to find out whether they are looking into this or are they considering it or not? Yes.
Well, I think to your point earlier, David, you know, that's a lot of money. And we, before you make a decision, you want to know what that impact is going to be. So all good conversation and, you know, we still need to be going on fact gathering mission here. And it will come up again. And I thank you, Kristin, for, you know, presenting to this to us tonight because it is important. We do care. So thank you for your efforts.
My pleasure. Thanks a lot.
All right. Have a great night. All right. We will move. I don't, I'm not quite sure where we are now. We're going back up to committee reports. Andrew, is that where we are?
Madam Chair, unless there's any old business, which I do not have for the record, I just wanted to throw that out there.
All right. Do we have, does anyone have any old business? All right. And we'll go down to the committee reports. I know we have as a standing item on here, Public Safety Building Capital Campaign Steering Committee. And I do believe I see Noreen Johnson, the co-chair, Noreen Smith, Johnson Smith. Did you want to say anything tonight, Noreen, or are we all set? You all set?
I, I think we're general, I think we're generally all set. I just want to say we're, we're talking to our neighbors, making sure people know that the plans have changed, that the funding and financing opportunities have been reevaluated and that we've looked at some really better ways to get this project done with less cost to the taxpayer and lots of opportunity in the future to have cost savings as well as the project is implemented. So I've been discussing this with my neighbors and people are very enthused. I've got a lot of other donors coming in. And right now I think we're at about just under $310,000 raised toward the project.
309-895, no.
309-8 something is correct. Yeah. And, and we have a lot of folks that are also making personal gifts. Several families in my neighborhood are making family gifts. So, so we're excited about it. Just wanted to say thanks for all the hard work that the building committee has done to reevaluate the project and with a new plan. And thanks to the selectmen for all the careful attention to the town's finances as a taxpayer. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Noreen. I think now too is a good time to mention to folks the website. Andrew, is it WWW, why did you just say, because I'll get it wrong. If you want more information about the project, I mean, there's actually a calculator. You can go in, put the value of your home. So you know how this would, the project will impact you. So you know how this would, the project will impact you. And there's a lot more other information there. So Andrew, hit it.
CharltonPublicSafetyBuilding.com
That was easy. I don't know why I can't remember that. All right, any questions or can we move on? All right, hearing none. Once again, thank you, Noreen. Bye-bye. We're moving down to town administrator report, I do believe.
Yeah, so just a few items. So as this year's progressed, we've had to continue to adopt our operational response to the new challenges that COVID's kind of thrown our way. You know, the most recent discussion has centered around the reopening of schools. And every day there's a new guidance that's being passed down by the state, DPH and Department of Elementary and Secondary Education related to the safe opening of schools as strategies to open to in-person instruction. The Board of Health particularly has been very busy reviewing and providing comment on reopening plans for both Bay Path and Dublin Charlton Regional School District, helping meet those guidelines even though they're changing daily. Additionally, Donna and I have been meeting with members of the town of Dudley Administration and the school administration to discuss how to implement the safe reopening guide, how those implementation efforts would have an impact on a municipal level. And we've been working with the schools to leverage any of the available CARES Act funding to support their reopening plans. Ultimately, we're kind of hoping for some federal assistance as we go to address some of the gaps that we're identifying, especially some of the operational expenses beyond December 31st with the CARES Act. Right now, the CARES Act only is reimbursing expenses that go up to that date. So we're kind of holding our breath for a, another federal package to help us out in this regard. I'll continue to keep the board up to date on this matter. And I think at the next regular meeting, we should be able to get Dudley Charlton School District Administration to at least discuss the reopening plans with the board and answer any questions that you guys have. And then just also on that note is that over the past 14 days, the town has seen seven new cases reported by the Board of Health. So I'll try to keep you guys updated as far as that's concerned, since that seems to be a, a number that the town, that the state is using to give a kind of assign those red, green and yellow designated.
Any questions? I'm sorry, Andrew, I thought you were done.
It was just that part. On the EDC aspect, we're getting to see, getting the approval process of seeking individuals to serve on the reconstituted board. We did send out letters today for members that did prior serve on the commission to gauge their interest in continuing to serve. We'll be working to solicit appointments from the boards that were designated to revise, in the revised charge going forward. So stay tuned for future meetings. And then just as far as recognition, I wanted to recognize the members of the Fire Department, Police Department and DPW for all the work with the recent storm that went through, the tropical storm that took down, you know, a lot of trees with some extensive damage to the trees in the roadways and power lines. They did a great work trying to relay, clearing trees that were in the roadways and relaying priorities off the national grid that we had pretty much 100% power restoration within two days. So I just want to commend them on that work. And then also just the members of the finance team who have been working seven days a week to try to get the audit done for FY20. We do already have our free cash certification for this year. And I know they're full steam at trying to get the audit done during a busy time, a busy time of year when things are a lot different than they usually are. So just want to relay that recognition.
Excellent. Questions for Andrew?
Not about that stuff, Madam Chair. I got a quick question at the end.
Bring on, I think we, you can, Bill, and that's last question, because I think that's the last thing before I make the meeting announcements, so.
Cool, excellent. Some of us, if not all of us, have received emails, calls, et cetera, regarding a dog incident without discussing the particulars right now, assuming that we're going to have some type of update slash hearing in early September. I just, because I know some people are going to be very interested on that. Again, I don't want to talk specifics right now. It's just, I just want people to realize that we are doing our due diligence and the expectation is something is, that we are going to review something. And I'm assuming, Madam Chair, possibly next meeting, if possible. That would be my request.
Yeah, we're going to do it as soon as possible. I know, Andrew, do you want to comment on that? Because I know we've been corresponding back and forth with folks who've been forwarding things to us, so.
We're just awaiting formal request for dog hearing on that.
So yes, we will, it will be on the agenda, Bill.
Thanks, Karen.
Yeah. All right, so the last thing just would be the meeting announcements. So our next meeting is the Board of Selectmen Goals and Objectives. It's really a workshop. And that's going to be September 1st and at 6:00 PM. And then our regular meeting will be on September 8th at 6:30 PM. And I do believe, Andrew, we're trying to work on, are we going to be still zooming? Are we going to try to have kind of a hybrid at that September 8th meeting? And I guess what are the wishes of the board? If anyone has been traveling, obviously zoom in, because we're still permitted to do that. But I want everyone to be comfortable coming to the meeting. So first, Andrew, tell us what we can do. And then I look to my peers to let me know what you want to do for our September 8th meeting, because we know the workshop is in person.
Your options are open. We're going to move the meeting for the, for the goal, for the goals meeting to the senior center, which is the location of the hybrid meeting, so we can try to test it out, make sure that everybody's comfortable in that setting and then go from there.
All right, what are your thoughts on September 8th? You just want to finish out the end of September with the Zoom meeting and then start in October? Or talk to me, Patsy?
I always prefer the in-person. I just think they're more focused and they work at a, and having the public watch. But I, I'm good with whatever the majority of the board thinks. If I'm the only one, you know.
Okay.
Unless I'll sit in Andrew's office and we'll.
Steve, what are your thoughts?
I think if our kids are going to be going back to school in some type of hybrid mode, we can do the same.
Good point.
David, you good? I didn't mute you, David, really.
I have no problem either way.
All right, Bill, and you're good?
Yeah, honestly, I don't care that much. I would just say that unless there are people in the audience, though, I don't really know what advises. I mean, but, I mean, I don't care. It's just, if it just give me the five of us, I'd rather do it from my home office, but that's just me.
All right, well, let's, let's play, we'll kind of play this one by ear for now and see what the progress that Andrew makes setting things up. And this is a housekeeping item, so we are allowed to talk to one another about this without violating any OML. So we will communicate about this and make sure everyone's comfortable. And I know when we do meet in person, that we're going to still have the Zoom access for the public, so they don't have to be exposed, right, Andrew? That's where we're going with that.
Right, right.
All right, all right. So did I forget anything? Any, did we have a motion to adjourn?
Yes, you do.
Whoa, all right. Second?
Second.
All right, no discussion, I imagine. All right, it's 6:50. All right, let's do the roll call. Steve?
Hi.
Patsy?
Hi.
Bill?
Hi.
David? Unmute yourself.
Hi.
Oh, hi. So the meeting is officially over. It's like 7:50. Nice job, everyone. Thank you to everyone who zoomed on in to join us. And thank my peers for your efforts. And Andrew, thank you for working so hard. All right, and we'll see, we'll see you all soon.
All right, everyone.